Okay, I would like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock start. And if you could stand for the pledge, please. Okay, pardon me because I will be sort of admitting people as we go along here. But first off, I'd like to welcome through one. And if you'd like to give us another little intro as to why you are here, okay?
Okay, everyone, so we're fifth number one, the local board structure. And we are here because of our merit badge on citizenship and a few. We autumn on November fifth, there will be a bigger training that we are helping out with. That it's a good way to get like two or three hours of community service. And after that, we're trying to get extra hours of community service. Because we need six hours of community service by cleaning up the airport after.
Now, how many boys are actually in the troop?
Right now, it was fourteen or fifteen that are active. So it's again, how the numbers stay, have you been all broke COVID with the? There's a couple more. All through COVID and our staff has been mixed with fifty, but the staff masters for coming up to thirty, thirty years. He finally retired, he's getting a few weekends off. So he's retiring after thirty three years, he was likely moving out to Old Saver. But John, John, then a member of the troop and put three boys through and they all got Eagle Scouts. And he's been an important part of our group for three years. And Eric Under, who grew up, that's Randy, he's a public defender, so he got a needle through Orange. His son's gone through the troop, we have him in Cub Scouts, he's got a needle. And Eric is taking over as the gun master.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. Well, welcome, everybody. I hope you find us somewhat invigorating. This is, it's a lot of business to go over, but hopefully you'll learn some things that are going on in town.
The most, my favorite merit badge, I remember when I was doing scouts, more than that's like, and I got to spend a day with them. So I love it.
Okay, well, like I say, you live in town, it's good to know what's going on in town. So, all right, our third item on the agenda for tonight is approving the minutes from the September sixth regular meeting. May I have a motion to accept? Do we have any comments, questions, or corrections on the minutes? All right, so none. I will call for the vote, all in favor of approval. All right, okay. We do, Don, I don't think you had the list, the next item is for the tax refund approval. Take that minute to look over the list. Fran provided that this morning. These are basically due sometimes for overpaying and sort of able sell and have to have a return because they've been appropriated amount on the tax. So may I have a motion to accept the tax refunds?
I will be accepted.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All in favor? You got that one. We have Will Brenton here, town clerk. Will, you are next on the agenda to bring us some information about our town code. Because now we've had a change with our municipal elections going from May to November. Right, so there's gonna have to be some corrections made for the town code.
Okay, yeah, I, I made this up today, so I didn't have a chance to. One last pass around. We, this is kind of just the first look at it. Generally, the code has a lot of references to May elections and to July first and June start date of offices and June thirtieth termination date. And this should be, I mean, they're overwritten by the legislature as far as if something. Something in conflict, the state statutes would take precedence. However, it seems foolish to leave something on there we know is not correct. And there's a, there's some decisions, and this is just my opinion, that for the appointed offices, the appointed boards, wetlands, Conservation Commission, Economic Development, those are all the July first to June thirtieth, and they're all staggered terms. And I would honestly leave those alone regardless of our elections. It's a lot cleaner, the way our elections are currently is it's the start of the terms of the now going forward, it's floating because it depends on the election, which is the first Tuesday after the first Monday, November, which always changes. And the terms start two weeks after that. It didn't seem like that'd be a good system to go with what I'll be appointed for. Again, just my opinion, something for you to.
No, but it makes a lot of sense what you're saying.
And that, that's what, if you don't make any changes, that's, that's what it is. They would, the terms of appointed officials would say the same with a couple of exceptions. Where ones that like, for example, town attorney, it says right in the code that the term runs concurrent with the Board of Selectment. So the Board of Selectment term changes to November, that changes as well. Assessor says July first to June thirtieth, I mean, a two-year term, I don't see any reason to change that. But that's something for you guys to think about. And with these, yeah, there's kind of two different approaches to take. You could do the minimalist and just go through, I did very, I made the PDF of the code. And we did word searches for May election and July first and June thirtieth, just to kind of see where we were. But, and you could do that, could just do a simple correction that should be non-controversial. All you're doing is making it compliant with current state statute. There's other, a couple others where there's some choices that could be made. And I kind of, I kind of put in here, the ones that I did bold and underlined, I'm suggesting. Then the ones I did underline italics are kind of questions, I don't feel strongly one way or the other. There's, there's, there's mentioning, there's several mentions of sanitary zoning and sanitary inspector, you know, like from nineteen fifty or something.
We don't have anymore.
We don't have sanitary.
We have PDHD now.
There's another, there's a whole section on solid waste, talks about CRA, Bridgeport Asterisk Waste. I don't know if any of that should be maybe. I don't, I don't know the answer to it, but I'm guessing some things have probably changed. That was about nineteen ninety. So I'm just throwing it out there, the, there's no particular, the only time sensitive thing gets to the source of it is, the town code was this size. Kind of an oddball, but we had, we had about twenty-five or thirty of these that we would distribute to all these different. Okay, twenty-one. You know, it would go to all the selectmen, the assessor, Board of Financiers, Town Council, Library. Many would get a copy of this book. And then every time there was a change, they would send us a packet and we'd have to change this page and then this page and that. They, they, General Code is a contractor that maintains this for us. And they've eliminated this size, they've made it this size. And this is not the nice one that they did, this is one that I just did a PDF. And, you know, so that's what it'll look like. But they, but they printed out with a little different spacing, then you have all the blank spaces and all the tabs and everything. And I wanted to do that a year ago. But then when we were talking about the charter, I don't want to waste money on if we're gonna change everything. And the kind of the same hopes true here, I'd like to produce maybe five books rather than twenty-something.
Because it would be online, so people would be able to access.
That's the thing, we don't, we haven't sold one of these in years, people just go online, or they can download a PDF. We only need a handful of real official printed books. I, but I don't want to waste the money on it and do it all and then say, oh, we're gonna change fourteen things.
Well, yeah, because it looks like we have a little bit of work ahead of us to get this all updated before we go and make any copies.
And I have the money in my budget to do the reprint this fiscal year. So my goal would be, if we're gonna make any changes, let's do it by the end of the, before the end of the fiscal year. So you don't have to make any.
I mean, anything changes, we'll have to go to a town meeting. So potentially, if we use the town meeting in May.
You could do that.
As a, as a focal point, a goal date. That gives you November, December, about seven, approximately seven months to, to do that. Now, do you want to gather a few people together to help you with this? Are you just gonna do it with your other assistant town clerks?
I'm open, I'm open for whatever, I certainly wouldn't mind. Again, this is just me looking at it quickly, I think someone else should look at it, obviously before to review it and say, and there's some questions in here. Just make sure we're getting all the, all the corrections.
I mean, it would probably be, kind of town council help us also make sure with any statutes and that kind of thing.
And with the wording, you know, we say, okay, we want to change this, we want to make sure we do it in the proper way that can be.
Okay, so this is, this is the initial conversation on this, and we can certainly follow up and figure out the best way to, you know, you think about it, let us know. I'm trying to approach it and move this all from there. Okay.
Perfect. Any questions for me?
I know, I think we know what we're kind of gonna have to be looking at, but we will whatever help we can give you and support and assistance. Does this have to be voted on?
Any change, you would have to vote on that tab.
At a time.
But, and the selection would have to recommend it, and have the vote to bring it, you know, items one through fourteen.
So basically, by April, we would have to have it so that because by the time we do a mailing and a posting for the town meeting, we'd have to make sure that it's incorporated in that.
And it's kind of your call with, the corrections are pretty easy, whether there's a couple of things you'd want to change or more policy ones that had mentioned here, that that's up to you, of course, that's not mine.
Okay. But no, your input is good because, I mean, you're the town clerk and you really get a lot of the questions and things. So it's important to have your input on it, for sure. Okay, I think we're good at this point with that. Excellent. Next item is the announcer stand, apply the horse rings. I think it's been sort of a handshake gentleman's agreement that the Lions Club has sort of maintained that and overseen it. But I have reached out to Town Council to maybe put together sort of a, I want to say a simple memorandum of understanding or agreement. But just something in place so everybody's on the same page as to who does what and when. But apparently they have maintained it for a long time. Yes. So we really won't be doing anything with that tonight. I just wanted to sort of get it on the radar and hopefully maybe by the next meeting in November, we can, we can have a memorandum of agreement in place that we can sign with them.
Is the, the horse commission still around?
The horse commission, I think, Andrew, is a question.
One thing to advise, they're willing to take care of, I know, remember, so take care of the rings and the master stand, but also what they want to do is Eagle Scout project. Rodney Ryanwall is gonna renovate the whole building, redo all the, the rings.
Okay, he needs to make sure he comes to us for approval from the Board of Selectment for that, okay? I want to make sure that it's done, okay?
For us, we've got the answers correct.
Okay, perfect, thanks. Okay, so like I say, I just wanted to kind of get this on the radar so we know what's happening and we'll kind of take it from there. Number seven is the acceptance of Clifford Drive, but we are going to have to table that until the next meeting because the town engineers did not get there until actually today. And I found a couple, a couple of little hiccups on the map that they gave us, that the numbers on one part did not agree with the numbers in another part. So they're gonna have to update that engineering map that they gave us, but the town engineer did not get there until today. So once they have done their approval and that map has been updated, then we should be able to accept it.
But where is this?
Off of Mesa, if you go twenty and take a left on Mesa, it's a, it's a right, it's a new five lots, right off of Mesa Drive.
Who built them or who's building in there?
Mr. Clifford.
What's that?
Of course, no, it's Mr., it's.
He wanted to put twelve lots, they got it down to five, it's a very nice area, a lot of hill, but very nice, very nice road. The road has been signed off by the public works already, so it's between Brind'Amir and Ole Miss.
Okay, so there's nothing we can do on that until we get the revised map and the recommendation from the town engineer. So that will hopefully be the next meeting. The next item is the Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine, which is the opt-out items. You had an attachment in your packet. I, instead of sending you ten pages of the minutes from the planning and zoning, I cut and paste just the pertinent motions. So that it was a little easier to see what they were talking about. So this is with regard to the actions by the commission with regard to single-family zoning with parking, I'm never gonna say this right, auxiliary dwellings on the property. I was thinking from five. So they have two here that they opted out on, and then the third one.
There is that in the past.
It should be the last couple of pages, that's, well, not the last page, but the last two pages before that, yeah, right on your left, left hand, the memo. And then the other is the minutes with the motions. Got it? Okay. So the first one was they opt out the requirement to allow temporary healthcare structures as permitted by twenty-one, twenty-nine. And as codified in Connecticut General Statute affecting eight dash one VP.
What, what are those? What is that, temporary healthcare structure? What are they referring to?
Off the top of my head, I do not know, but I have to.
Just, anybody know? Is there anybody here from PNC?
No, there is no one here from PNC. I runs and see if we have any.
I read through the whole thing, you know, and I got it, but I was hoping someone could explain a couple of the terms. Like that one.
I mean, I don't know if they're talking about like a like a healthcare facility, like where people go to rehab, I don't make, it doesn't, I mean, I, they did their due diligence and we're just bringing this forward because this has to be voted on by us.
To afford, yeah.
Well, to, to make sure that it's opted out, otherwise we end up having to, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Well, I would trust that they know what they're doing.
We did some diligence and have done their.
Somebody was here. Thank you. Small self-contained prefabricated dwellings that are temporarily placed residential property allowing individuals living in the principal dwelling to care for the temporary healthcare structure occupant.
Oh, that's not what I thought at all. It's almost like an other auxiliary structure.
Like a housing site.
Yeah, like a bunch of little bursting ones.
That's, that is not what I thought at all. The way it's worded, but yeah. So they have opted out, they voted unanimously to opt out to allow that. And then the second one was here, hereby opt out the requirement to allow accessory apartments as permitted under PA twenty-one, twenty-nine. And they voted unanimously to opt out of that one as well.
And the reason why?
Well, that, I know that one would allow, like, I have my barn, I could put a apartment or two in the barn. Or I could build a little shed and put an apartment in the shed, it will allow multi-accessory apartments on a single-family lot.
Well, my guess is they want oversight of the building itself, they don't want an automatic approval.
No, we have to have the whole.
Yeah, I, I know, that's what I'm saying, is that, that people want to see plans or see what's going on rather than saying you can automatically do this, is that it?
Sharon's been on it. All right, go ahead.
There are, being able to have one of these humans is already addressed in our zoning regulations. And in our, in our regulations, it's sensitive to the environment, it's very constrained, I don't like that.
But it's have to come before P and Z, it's just not automatically. Right, and if they didn't opt out, then it would be automatically okay to do it and bypass P and Z.
This will make it so they have to go to a public hearing.
Right.
So they've been, like I said, they voted unanimously to opt out of that.
To keep it the way it is.
Right, and then the third one was to reach, they hereby do not opt out of the requirement to restrict parking space limitations as specified. And they voted unanimously. Now, it's interesting because it says here that they voted unanimously to opt out where in the, in the bowl, it says do not.
Right.
Does not.
Caribes does not opt out, meaning they're gonna do it.
But I believe they were, they were gonna allow it because they weren't opting out of that one. Will, can you, can you double check on the minutes on that? Because there's appears, my understanding is they were not gonna opt out of this one. But the wording here said that they voted unanimously to opt out.
You have the minutes there?
This is, I, I cut and placed it out of the.
Well, I see what you're saying.
The very last paragraph, because it's in, it's folded, that's saying that they do not opt out.
Maybe because they opted out of everything else.
It was just that one there, they are.
They put in both, oh.
See what they said, they put, they did it in bold, but they were not opting out.
So that probably should be.
So the vote should say you're not opting out.
I know they'd opted out of that because they did not feel that the parking issue
Was an issue?
In Bethany, because it's a one-to-one, so one bedroom, one parking space. So they didn't feel that they needed to opt out of that, to opt out of that because they opted out of the other.
So we'll have to modify the minutes.
Minutes will have to be corrected on that one.
It's clearly in the, the bold there, that it was intended, but just it was missing a word in the second part there.
So basically, what we need to do is to have a motion to accept their recommendations for the opt-out and not opt-out.
I make that motion group.
Their recommendations.
Recommendation from the Board of.
This is the second, do we have any other comments or questions? Seeing no others, for the vote to accept their recommendations, all in favor? Unanimous. Back to our agenda. Okay, the welcome sign, I haven't had an opportunity, and Don, I don't think we were able to reach out to the state either to find out what their requirements are for signs on a state road. So I think we're gonna have to hold on this one a little bit longer till we can get that information. Because if that sign is going to go on a state road, we want to make sure that it's properly, we follow their rules and regulations. But just so you know, the, the owners of the Shell gas station have offered to donate a welcome to Bethany sign. Like when you go to Nogatuck and you see welcome to Nogatuck on the Eye on, the corner of the Eye on Bank property. That's basically what they're looking to do for us, for Bethany. We just have to figure out, because it's going to go on a state road, we don't have jurisdiction on the state road, so we have to find out what their rules and regulations are for placement of a sign like that. So at some point, maybe hopefully you will see that sign, but we have to make sure we go through the proper procedure to do it. Wonderful. Now we have the grants, Leslie, would you kind of like to run, run the ball on this one?
I can run the ball on this one. All right, we'll start with the A, which is the money from the state ARPA allotment. It is two three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grants. The first three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant is for windows in town hall and the parking rec annex. We would be redoing the windows that are not temperature friendly. They're not very energy efficient. And the second three hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be to work on renovating the gym. We're looking to put a decent audio system in there, we would like to put video capability in there as well. It probably needs a new floor. Some storage. Some storage, there's a long laundry list of things to do to improve the gym for community events, town meetings, and just to make it a better, more usable space for the town going forward. Because anyone that's been at a recent town meeting knows that there are issues with the microphones and things go in and out. We're just trying to put forth a very nice product for the town so that the town people, residents can enjoy the facilities that we have. And that's the state funds, the federal funds would be on our list here, B. Rosa Delora's office has put, we put forth an application to them for renovations for the gym and center station. They consolidated our request to one location and the million dollar award is strictly for Center Station.
Wow.
Yeah.
Put an additional one or do something else?
Well, well. Art Center, we have just site inspection and we have a laundry list of things that we would, that we could potentially do. But we are, we have to continue in the information gathering stages and reach out to some engineers to find out what is possible, what is feasible. But yes, some of the things that we would consider, well, we have to upgrade the restroom facilities in that building.
Your gold-plated.
The plumbing needs to be updated. And it, it, the walls need to be repaired. Yeah, there's a lot, but yes, a a new updated septic system would be on the wish list.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a lot of work.
In addition, new office space, updated office space for certain, an upgraded kitchen. There's a long laundry list of things that we would be looking to do. We just have to figure out what is feasible and how far that.
So we have someone who's advising us on the cost of these things.
We're not gonna do too much until the money hits the buyer.
What we know with that is they are hoping to wrap up the appropriations bill by Christmas.
Okay, but then we won't know.
But we will not see the dispersment of funds before the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. So we will continue to do our due diligence on the exploration and the possibilities. But we are not going to sink significant money into engineering studies until we are guaranteed the money.
And we can use that, some of that money for the engineering, that grant, we can use some of the money.
From start to finish.
Can we reimburse or no, is there a start date?
Would be something we'd have to.
Yeah, so we get a definite, yes, you have the money, there's no sense in spending any money.
Yeah.
But we could, but our applications clearly stated for all costs associated with the project from start to finish. So that would include engineering costs in our definition of start to finish of a project.
Yeah, because typically, most grants don't allow you to do engineering, architecture, things like that. You have to have plans in hand, which costs a lot of money just to apply for a grant.
Yeah, didn't I see that, Woodbridge is getting a million bucks for their gym, did I see that?
It's six boxes, that Center Station that they're revamping?
No, no, their gym, their, their, Woodbridge, to do what they essentially would. Their, their gym is better than ours right now, and they're upgrading it further for meetings and such and epistic stuff. So I, I thought I read that they got it already.
Unless it was a different grant.
No, it's probably.
Might be a different.
There's a lot of different grant programs out there.
I know.
Yeah, and moving on to the deep pilot program. We still continue to gather information on that, we're working with SCROG. That will definitely, if we're going to opt into this, it will be done through a town vote. We will not do this arbitrarily. What DEP is looking to do is they are looking to, since Bethany is one of the few towns in the state. Since Bethany is one of the few towns in the state that has townwide curbside pickup. They are looking to. Recycle food compost. Yeah, so it's, it the, the project, the program, it, it's. Trying to be. Resource friendly with your garbage. You recycle your recyclables. Now there is a way to recycle your food scraps. Which they turn into energy. Then you still have your trash trash. We are looking through, we are working our way through contracts. And feasibility and logistics to find out if it's worthwhile for the town to.
Because we have, we have a, our, we have our contract.
We do have a contract.
With RWS.
They have a contract with RWS. They are in conflict.
Oh.
So that is one of the issues that I'm working on trying to resolve. I'm doing the, the financial feasibility study on it. To find out if this is worth or not.
Because we, we're already on our third or fourth version of a contract from DEEP, which we have major issues with. And I've sent it to town council this last one because I was like. I can't sign, I can't sign, I just can't bring this forward. So there's, there's a few issues with it that we need to.
Part of Meriden is. Well, they're not a good.
Well, I mean, you know, one of the things we have to remember too, we are the only rural town in the SCROG county. Most of the other towns don't have to worry about bears and coyotes and raccoons and ripping their garbage apart when you put these bags out.
Yes.
Um and it seems like bears are getting more and more frequent visitors in our, in our town. I don't really miss my garbage, I'm not sure.
You're gonna put a bag of food scrap. On the ground by your garbage can at night, wait for the garbage man to pick it up in the morning.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are a few issues that need to really be resolved and and.
Yeah, yeah, actually, you know, there's some real straightforward.
Because, because we could potentially have an issue. I mean, it's nice to think that we have a green bag and an orange bag for trash and food waste. And you put them out. But if people are not properly following the program and decide that they have now filled their trash bag. And it's full and they still have more trash and then decide to throw more trash into the food bag. What are the dark, RWS guys gonna do if they notice that people are not throwing things away properly? Are they gonna leave the trash? Are they, you know, so these are things we have to really kind of consider. Because we're only gonna be given so many bags and when you use up those bags, then people are gonna have to go out and buy the special bags and where the bags going to. Be that they can buy them. So there's like a whole dynamic that goes into this. So that it really has to seriously be considered. Does it really make sense?
Correct.
Because I don't want it to have backfire on us. If it makes sense, great, but if it's gonna be something that's gonna backfire because people aren't doing it properly. Or animals are ripping bags apart and then we have a bigger problem because now trash is gonna, is gonna be strewn all over the roads. Who's picking that up? You know, so we have to really, really have our ducks in a row on this.
Yeah.
So, but.
Alright, um. We're at low set um. The Board of Finance has recommended that the. Board of Selectmen approved two low set projects. The first is eighteen thousand dollars for air conditioning in the new land use office. And the second is for. Um renovations of the land use and the selectman's assistant office. The total dollar amount that. The Board of Finance approved was up to twenty five thousand dollars. Because the notes for the low set project for the painting and the carpeting in the two offices. There was inconsistencies. One form said five thousand, the other said sixty two hundred. And we chose to err on the side of caution for up to twenty five thousand for the two projects. And the work is complete on the renovation of the two offices, but the AC is not yet installed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um steep, we have been awarded. Um funds through steep grant. To replace guide rails on some of our critical roads that. We need them on turns and curves before winter, hopefully. And paving um the access roads, the fire depart, to the firehouse. And around center station because it's very hazardous wow to get the senior bus out there. And the total grant awarded, the total project grant award was for five hundred, five thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. With four oh four sixty coming from the state. And there's a matching portion with steep grants, so that means the town is responsible for one oh one, one seventy four. The Board of Finance has recommended that twenty five thousand dollars be moved. From this year's operating budget for guide rails. To fund the match portion for the guide rail part of the grant. But the other seventy six thousand one hundred seventy four dollars come from a special additional appropriation. From the general fund and not be taken out of the major road resurfacing.
Sure, that's fine.
And that will have to go to town. We will make a list of what needs to be brought forward to the town. Meeting, maybe it's final approval by the town.
And that kind, this sums up everything. One small piece that I wanna go back to. On the funding from Cabrera. Jen has started the work on the grant process, the application process. And it's starts with survey monkey, so we are starting to jump through the hoops to figure out. Where we need questions and where our stumbling blocks are. And I have been in touch with someone at the state to help guide us through. And that was new since the Board of Finance meeting last week.
Right, and um. I had take, taken a quick look at the Cabrera stuff and that whole application, it wasn't geared at all towards towns. Yeah, it's written for nonprofits and everything else. It didn't make any sense.
So we're trying to.
Names or in there, were they OPM people?
No, they're not OPM people, but they are other individuals at the state and I have been in contact with the one and she will. Guide us through step by step.
State agency there.
Cannot recall. I know it's not HUD.
DAS?
No, Delora's is coming through HUD.
No, Cabrera's uh would, I think it's coming through the state, that's why. The money's federal coming down to the state, so some state.
I cannot recall which one it is right now.
They probably don't know. It might be social services and then we're.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I, because I'm off the top of my head.
Grants like this, where this is totally, totally new for them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um so then, yeah, oh, well, the last is ARPA funds. We are recommending that um. We ask the town for input on how to spend the remaining funds. The Board of Finance is asking that we ask the town residents.
Can, can we talk about having a citizen group ad hoc? So you talked about putting something in the bulletin. Can we ask who wants to be on an ad hoc committee to determine what? Best use of next tranche of ARPA funds. Other towns did it this way.
What do we have roughly left in our performance?
We have two. Uncommitted, but once um, once the grant paperwork is completed for, is it the steep grant or?
No, for the Cabrera funds.
Okay, that'll release a hundred and seventy five back. So we'll have four hundred available for local ARPA funding that would be uncommitted.
And we have until the end of twenty twenty four to encumber those funds for different practices, but and then have until twenty twenty six to spend it. To make sure. I like your optimism, we can do that.
There's always certain things you can spend it on.
So uh maybe uh tomorrow you and I can work on putting together a little verb for the um bulletin, the bulletin will be going out. Next week.
Because people have asked, I mean, when all this stuff came out, the ARPA money. Um how we were deciding what was what.
Right, and initially we were looking at department heads and like the fire department.
And that was the other thing is to ask different commissions and then commissioners, do you have any suggestions, have any ideas?
Right.
Uh, yeah, so.
Okay, so we will put together a little word. For the bulletin, uh it will be going out next week to do that. Now, the, the next item, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. With that, uh I think that's a good idea. Uh I would just suggest that maybe you have a. Like a timeline that it's because. Just, just human nature, I mean, you can get people to agree to say if this is gonna be a six month commitment and then the report or three months or whatever. That, that's, that seems to be, if it's some open ended thing, it could go on for two years, people are, because I don't think you're looking at these people to be overseeing that. The. I'd say, I think you might be able to get more people if they know it's a.
And we, and we could also provide the, the group, whoever it just happens to be is with the list of what the criteria are and what the monies can be used for. So that they're not just really nearly coming up with ideas and then we look and go, oh, sorry, we can't do that.
Yeah, yeah, and they can get in.
Um, okay, so we will take care of that. And then the, the next item, actually, number eleven was items for town meeting, which we are really going to have to sit down. And look at the ones that we need to bring forward.
Do we need to literally vote on if who needs to come forward though at this time? Yeah.
Not right now, no, because we don't know.
Oh, I thought we did, no.
Well, no.
You could wait until your next selectman's meeting so that you would have more clarification. On what you need, as long as you know what the issues are right now.
We're still waiting on Cabrera's.
And then do it all.
And do it all at once, you know.
When's our next meeting?
Uh well, actually, we will be canceling the meeting on the first because um we will both be at a conference for CCM. That's their annual convention.
I know.
So we will both be there, so it will actually be a special meeting two weeks later. So when we have that special meeting, we will have to be very specific. As to what we are putting down on that agenda because we cannot deviate off of that agenda because it's a special meeting.
Right, okay. Well, that would be November.
Uh the fifteen, I'm sorry, the fifteen, whatever, two weeks, two weeks after would be the fifteen. Because finance is the eighth. Election day, finances on election day.
So, okay.
Okay, um yeah, so we will, we will post uh cancelling the first and then we will. Put these, make sure we have a very thorough agenda for the fifteen.
There's no timeliness with these grants that we have to be concerned about.
I think at this point, I think we're okay. I think we're, we'll be fine and it gives us an opportunity to finalize and get confirmation on things. And then put together a list to bring forward that this is what we need to bring for the town. So, okay, okay. Um I have no update right now on the Simpson property um.
Wasn't thinking gonna write a letter to be to ask what's going on?
He was going to contact me, he, he, we have a specific attorney who's handling that, so um. Ben is coming in this week, I will. Make sure we can see if we can get, because it seems like we got to a certain point and then all of a sudden we, we hit a wall on it. So um, we'll have a follow up on that one. Uh, our website and our IT, I mean, we. Our website, I think if anybody has been on our new website, hopefully you find it user friendly. It, we, it's still slight work in progress, but we've um, I think made, major strides in updating it. And, and have the information that's usable and, and easy to, to access. So, enjoy it. IT is basically, we are just, we've been doing a lot of moving around in the building with departments, so. Uh we've been keeping busy sort of relocating wires and phones and um. But we're all making it happen and work. As you can see, we have a little project going out in the hallway there. We did add some spider webs and spiders and. Some Halloween stuff to kind of really give it that touch of rustic. So uh we are hoping we actually have our bids. Uh are due tomorrow and then we will have a bid opening at two o'clock to see who the lucky winner is who gets to do the project out in the hall. So, and we are going to have it somewhat look, when you come in the front lobby, the white with the gray on top, but it will not be clothed out here, it will be painted gray. But something could brighten up and there'll be new carpeting. Uh we already have the new, new ceiling up, so um we're, we're.
What's this uh, RP, stuff like that? How many vendors, or I mean, potential contractors?
People come through.
I'm gonna say nine or ten.
Wow.
It depends on how many people actually show up.
Yeah.
We had nine or ten looking at it, so that's, that's always good. Center station room, we actually, nine would you open?
Eleven bids we opened for the, for the center station project, the room. Yeah, so we've uh, people are showing some and just we'll find out tomorrow when it comes to a clock, so. Uh other items I have to come before the board. One is, I received a letter from Teams Toys for Kids. They are asking if we would be willing to um be a site to collect toys for them for the holiday.
This is Team and Derby.
Team and Derby.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know if we'd like to give approval and I could reach back out to them and I.
I would like to know, I, I've done that myself and I just wondered. What their criteria is this there? What, what are they looking for?
Well, it looks like they're trying to do a toy drive and collect items for, it says toy drop off sites.
But what kind of toys and?
That does not say, just says making magic happen for thousands of childrens and, and families. So um.
Who, who have raised toys for the last? Twenty years, it's not them, right? It was somebody else. We was in a box in the, in the foyer for toys.
Yeah, Marines created.
Yeah, because we don't wanna.
I think that that might have been in combination with the state.
Well, I, I came into office and COVID hit, so we didn't do much collecting of anything. So this is gonna be the first time uh that we're opened up to be able to, to do something like this in the last three years, so.
They, and they used to just collect in a lot of towns that they served in the valley. Um but I, I haven't been in touch with them for years, so. That's why I asked.
I mean, here's the, there's the letter I received, I mean, you can take a look at it and um. But I mean, we don't, we would also, if, if we approve it tonight, then that's something else that we can put in the bulletin to advertise that.
That would be nice.
Um that we're collecting for. We're very flexible here, we give scores as well, and that's good, so we're good. Um, okay, so can I have a motion that we will approve? I will reach out to them to become a site. Uh if you're okay. Okay, and I will keep you up to date as to what goes on and we will, I'll kind of take something out of this and put a little word together for the uh. Bulletin as well to advertise it so people know we, and we will have a drop off here. Um another item for uh. Other business, uh Will provided me with three cemetery deeds um. We have Glenn and Dorinda Barletta. Uh and for graves number six in lot fifty one and number five and six in lots fifty two of section C. We have. A state of Paul Crowder Junior, Junior for Graves one, two and three in lot fifty eight. And uh Graves number one and two in lot fifty seven of section C. And we have Craig and Jeannie Barletta. Um for Graves number six in lot fifty eight and grave number six in lot fifty seven of section C. So these are actually uh just clarifying some purchases that were made and we now have it all squared away. In documentation, so these are all good to go. So do I have a?
Why, why do we have to vote on this? Why isn't it?
We're, we're selling town property, basically.
Okay, because the town oversees the senators, so.
Okay.
Don't make the motion to.
Approve my signature for this. Pretty self-explanatory, all in favor? Uh, okay, we are now at public comment, is there any? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, you have another business? Okay, I apologize.
I do.
I apologize.
Um. I had promised Leslie a while back and I did together, I told Don. Uh, when I sign checks, I make notes. And so since I came into office. Um. Learning about the processes and stuff, I made a lot of notes. So therefore his, now that. A purchasing manual and all that, I have just some recommendations and questions about stuff overall. That might be able to be answered, so.
Okay, so, so can you just give those to us so that we can then take them and have a top opportunity to look them over?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I don't.
Okay, I was gonna say, until I read it, I really don't feel appropriate to have a discussion on it unless I.
No, you can take a look at it, but what it does include is just, uh, office supplies, reviewing contracts. Things that I know that you're, you're doing now and the previous. Uh, person in your role and the finance director did not do. So I know you guys are, I talk of it now.
Mm hmm.
So these are not surprising.
Okay.
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 But there are some things that are surprising, but, but they probably are old, old news now.
Okay. But, okay. And I may add. I, I can make another copy.
Yeah, this is.
Okay.
Perfect. Um, the other thing I wanted to, to recommend and maybe bring for a vote is. I'd like to know, uh, more about when there are significant events happening in town. The solar farm, for instance, a solar thing that happened, okay?
Nothing's happened on that yet.
I know, we, we, uh, I only found out about it because of Brian being on conservation and because of us being near. Down the road from it. But nonetheless, um, to be able to know about it as a select person that's happening. And significant real estate events like that. So, another thing I would like is our town attorney to write a letter perhaps to I N Bank and say what's going on. Because we know nothing.
Well, that's out of our, that's out of our hands. That's not town property.
No, but we can ask, we can ask to be informed and know. And they could just say, they can, first we send us a letter and say. Uh, we're listing it for sale with a Realtor or we're not, or, you know, we, I know it's in the hands of an L O C. But it's a significant property in town. And, um, it puts them on notice that we care. Okay, if nothing else. Just like the solar people. It's one notice that we care. We wanna know what's going on, perhaps we can help out the homeowners who are around there. It's the first one in town too, so, you know, it's important. So significant events, particularly real estate in town, Bethany. Um, and then the third item might be, uh, foreclosures that are happening and, um. That we be aware of these. So now we, we, we get tax, you know, bills, things like this, but. Why not also know what properties are going for auction? If there are, if, if there's a date sent.
Or tax auction, you mean, or?
Yes, for town tax auction, we, we should know about that. I don't know why we don't.
But it's. I, I, I don't always know, but there, because it goes through the tax.
I know.
And the accessory office.
I know, it just seems like it's a missing item here.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be on the tax returns.
No, but if, if the town, if we're, if, if it's gotten that far where there's gonna be an action. Um. Because of taxes, what, we should know about it. It's a significant event in this town.
And I made a note.
Okay, so, do I need to bring a motion that this is something that we should consider?
Not right at the moment. No, uh, let, let me follow up and, and be, and follow up with legal on this as to what the property.
In, um, with Rocky Corners, just like Vin.
I have, yeah.
Could write a letter, we could sign it, whatever we wanna do and worded as such, we wanna be on notice. About that property.
I, I.
Particularly the transfer, I mean.
I've got the three items.
Yeah. It's quiet, as far as I know, I've been trying to find out, can't find anything. Hear anything?
I've heard anything.
No, it's important, property in town.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I made a note, I've got the three of them listed. Um, public comment, anyone from the public?
You guys can talk.
What was your official version of what's happening with the solar farm that's going on?
Right now, there's nothing happening with it because they're still in the, um. Informational stage, they, they did a letter to the abutting properties. Um, and had a Zoom meeting, which I don't. I don't know if everybody was actually able to get on that because I know. The, the initial group that they reached out to, we got blocked out somehow, we got the wrong link. So we weren't able to get on that meeting, so.
The five days, my son works for a solar company down in Dow. And I gave some basic information on what was going on. He said. We need somebody to work on that.
He said what?
It is going to be a lot of noise. That's, there's actually drawings.
There's a. They've already planned.
Yes.
It's, it's all over Rhode Island in Massachusetts, it's kind of been late. The problem with Bethany is we got a lot of land. Those people gonna come in, particularly firm land.
All in, in Rhode Island and Massachusetts.
Oh, it's all over the place, yeah, in farms.
Right middle of the residential road?
Yeah. It mostly farms.
Well, it's. Well, I know Hampton, I think has one on Gaylord Mountain Road.
Yeah. Or did that, then, that?
They defeated, I believe they defeated.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I know everyone's writing letters because it, because of the nature of the project, it's out of our hands. Um. So, anybody who's reaching out to us, we just tell them they need to contact the, the siding council. Because they're the ones that are sort of coordinating this whole thing with the, the attorney and the company that's promoting it. Because the, the resident of, I see, I don't know if the company reached out to the resident or the resident reached out. To the company to get this project, I have no idea.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Can we, similar to before, express an interest and say, please, uh, keep us informed, uh, because.
They're, they're supposed to keep us informed.
Well, they blocked us out, so we're not.
Doesn't it go through planning and zoning?
Well, we, we planned on, we, I think we, we are going to do a letter to the siding councils, giving our dismay that the company didn't even allow us. Access to their, their informational meeting. We are, we are gonna do a letter.
Ben's writing a letter.
Ben is writing a letter.
That, that's.
Yeah, he and Hyrum were talking about putting together a letter, um, because it was the, the chair of planning and zoning, the chair of.
Right.
Inland Wetland, myself, Lena, um, Hyrum, Ben. Yeah, there were about five or six of us that were kind of key people on this conversation and. I tried on three different devices, couldn't get on every, and then we're texting and nobody could get on, so.
That's the sort of thing, though, that I'd like to be informed of, that's all. Because in between selecting meetings and things like this come up, if I hear about it and there's none of that sort of thing. I do wanna know, I wanna be included, you know, copied on it, if there's a link, I wanna be able to call in.
Well, it doesn't necessarily always mean that it's Board of Selectmen work. I, I hate to say that, but I mean, there's some times when. Uh, I have to deal with an immediate issue and it's.
I understand.
Because it also, you have to remember that if we deal with things in conversation. It becomes a quorum when you are, and you, you and I are on things. It's a caucus for us because we're the same party. It becomes a quorum when you and I are on different things, so we'll have to be careful how we attack things.
Well, it's difficult when there's six weeks between selecting meetings as well, so.
Okay, things come up.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Any public comment? Another gap side fact.
Yeah, really, whatever the site is, be very careful because they can show sunshine and rainbows and butterflies all on a property. The problem is, they've gotta basically build a wall around it too.
They have to build fences, it has to be, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I lived, lived in that property for fifty seven years. I don't wanna see a huge wall, uh, it would come to prison. Right, you know, the residential background.
Yeah.
That's.
I'm wondering about the utility poles that would be coming off of that, how high they are.
And, and then you gotta consider.
Separate.
And the maintenance. And my son, again, he, he's been working there for, for almost a year now. He said they're inner all the time, twenty four hours a day, so you're gonna have traffic in and out there and it's not. The, uh, electronic vehicles make a noise. It's gonna be trucks and, and, and construction vehicles all day long. We have to harm the state then, cause like you said, it's not in our hands whatsoever.
Yeah.
To state it.
Yeah. And most of the, a lot, most, several of the residents have already, um. Vented their displeasure with the project.
Yeah.
Um, to the siding council and, and to the attorney's office, I think, too, that, um, was sort of organizing the informational. Uh, meeting, so that I think they're getting the gist of the fact that people are not happy about this project.
Uh, I mean, you know, some very similar, uh, uh, hundred years ago, when they were trying to put the southern towers in the little bit of Black State Forest. And. We make enough noise and say, no, no, no.
Yeah.
The siding council might actually listen.
Mm hmm, mm hmm, yeah.
So taking down a lot of trees, I mean, most of us are also there.
And they're actually in this, on that property. Trying to visualize the site, I believe there are two sections of wetlands on that property as well. So they had, they would have to be working around that, so, um, yeah. Yeah, I think, like I say, enough people have already started to vent their displeasure about this project, so I think they're getting the, the gist. So, let's see, but, um, any other public comment? Okay, uh, seeing none. Motion to adjourn. I don't think anybody's gonna argue on that one, it's exactly eight o'clock, one hour.
For sure.
Nicely done. Well, I hope everyone does well with their, their merit badge. You'll have to keep me posted.
There'll be that next piece.
Oh, boy, well, it was videotaped, but you have to look back at anything for future.
Have a good night, everybody.